Georgia City Council, agenda of regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 13th, 2024. This is talking. If you would, I would like to invite Pastor Corey Millian, if you'll come up and say the prayer.
I'll thank you for this day, because truly this is the day that tomorrow has made me rejoice and be glad. And thank you, Father, for the mayor, Father, and the city council board, Father, we pray to bind them together, Father, so they can lead this city in the way that it's supposed to go, Father, and for prosperity to take place in Jesus' name. Amen.
Here, I stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do I have a motion for approval of minutes for the regular meeting on January the 2nd, 2024?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting on January the 2nd, 2024. Do I need to do them separate, or can I do it all at one time? An approval for the minutes of our special meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Millian. Mr. Craven. Ms. Backus.
Yes.
Mr. Seager's good. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion for approval of minutes for the special meeting on January the 16th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting on January 16th, 2024.
A second.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Craven, Ms. Backus, Mr. Seager's good. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Mayor, before we go into the citizens speaking, I'd like to see if we could amend the agenda to include other personnel matters in the executive session, just so we'd be able to.
amend the agenda for the personnel matter in the executive session?
Yes, I mean, so we can expand the discussion if I have a.
The personnel matter.
I'll second it.
Okay, and the lawsuit. But that needs to be amended.
Personnel matter and lawsuit?
In the law, did we get the second? Did we have the motion for the lawsuit as well? Seven.
Mr. Gardner, do you approve both? Do you second both of them? Okay, Mr. Seager, Mr. Millian, Mr. Craven, thank you. Mr. Seager's good. Motion is carried. Thank you. Citizens wishing to speak, you have five minutes. Adrian?
Well, I read y'all a lot, but just comment after. I'd first like to just take, pick it up. I'd first like to thank Darns City for helping me with trash bags for our landings. But I have to say today, the school board and city, I don't get why y'all destroying Brunchon-Darren and not utilizing help better other issues in our town. Why do we always destroy our history instead of repurposing it? It's not too late to save it, but we know we won't, just like our old courthouse, just like Nitronics. We ready to destroy stuff and give it a plaque with, in remembrance of. There's something to benefit the town with. It might just be an empty school built to y'all, but it's where we grew up and shared a lot of memories. I know Brunchon-Darren will be lost, but to citizens of Darlington, I'm here today to rally you in unity with unconditional love for the betterment of Darlington. We have solutions from St. John's to Brunchon-Darren to Lake Darpo to bring tourism and fun activities like kayaking to Whewerson Park, which would also build and clean our Mill Hill and Darlington Country Club.
Hallelujah.
Thank you. Amen. I know many don't care about the Mill Hill, but I want the betterment of the whole town, and we have many solutions which we could better our town and give us fun stuff and activities and bring our streets to life. We also like to publicly say to NASCAR, I keep reaching y'all for four used tires after the race to be made in the donation bin for our landings. Y'all have wide tires, it'd be easy to make them proof donation bins, so we could raise money for the betterment of our landings, for the blues we like to eat. And to make our landings more beautiful over time. Final comment. I thank as a student of St. John's and Brunchon-Darren for Skummer School many times. I like the morals they taught me. I like the hands-on learning, which the middle school and high school lacked. And our kids were drained of their dreams and put into a pre-work simulation to make kids into work tools. I want young kids to know, dream big, don't let the system beat you, beat it. If Joe Biden can be president of the greatest nation of the world, you can too. But to all the teachers and all these, at these schools, they always should be loved and supported. And I thank them for the kindness and teaching me their knowledge, and I'm blessed to have any of them in my life. I just wish they wouldn't destroy every building, instead utilize them, because y'all destroyed Nitronics and made it into a toxic waste field for the past 10 years that's been draining chemicals out with pipes. Now it's a fenced-in waste of rock and dirt parking lot with a tombstone. Don't wait for them to start breaking big bricks. Let's push back with solutions to better our issues in our town. For the common man, I have many solutions for the future. If you would like to know more, my number is 843-307-5133. I'm willing to work with everyone and talk more on our solutions and tell you how you can help. Y'all have any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
I appreciate y'all.
You do need to talk with us more because the issue with Nitronics, the city didn't do that.
Well, it was a good building. We used to like to explore it, and now it's a parking lot, when it could have been something more.
No, it can't because of what Nitronics, because of that and the owners, the building itself and the products that they had there.
It was toxic, it had a lot of mercury. But see, all that stuff, they released it in sewages, too.
The, our health, authoritative state agencies have been here and guidance and still in treatment of that. It's just that it cannot be used, it's gonna take 20 to 30 years before that can be used.
Oh, I know. That's just the same.
So, it's nothing we can do now.
It was a pretty yellow building, and we just gave it a plaque, just like we gave the old courthouse a pretty picture. You know what I'm saying? It just, we had architecture, and then now we got nothing but rubble. That's how I understand it.
It wasn't the city's choice that had to happen.
Well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just be destroying stuff. We just try to come up with solutions more. That's what I'm trying to, from y'all about, because Brunchon-Darren is gone, but.
But that's a school, school issue. We tried to get it.
Well, we know St. John's ain't going, but that's my final comment.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. First off, I would like to start by saying. First off, I would like to start off by saying that I wish certain councilpeople and people who work for the city would get their knees off my councilwoman's neck and off the citizens' neck, because we on the ground screaming for help. We can't breathe. When we bring up comments and certain things, you ready to throw us out? And another thing, with the city manager's contract, when is that up? I never heard nothing about it. I don't even see it on some of the agendas. That's my comments.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to speak about the homeless. I happened to witness a homeless gentleman coming into the Ojones when I was being.
You can turn that to your face up.
All right, and I saw the way the gentleman was treated and the ways the officers reacted to it, which I want to commend them on their behavior. They were very nice. But the homeless people are people too, and we are a town that have a abundance of abandoned homes here. And we could take some of those homes, or either one of them, and open them and let someone run it, and another person look for a job for them to keep while they're there, and that would be one of the stipulations. As long as they kept their job, they could keep a home and a roof over their heads. And they have to report back by six or seven in the evening to be there to stay. But we need to take care of the homes, because they're people too, and they, you don't know what they went through to even get into that situation. We could talk about buildings and different things, but people are the most important thing in this world. And for me to see that happening that morning, it really got on my nerves, so I said I have to, someone has to talk up for them, because we don't know why they're in that particular situation. So I would appreciate that if we would try to get an abandoned house and have someone to run it and take the homeless off the street, because it's been so cold. If you've got ice on your windshield, can you imagine them being out there all night? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take this opportunity, because this is traditionally Black History Month, where we celebrate a black history. And I simply wanted to acknowledge some of the folk that's in city government that has made history here in Darlington. And I'm beginning with the first African-American female who was the elected mayor here, Ms. Gloria Hines. I wanted to also acknowledge the first African-American chief of police, Chief Washington. He was here. We also want to recognize the very first African-American judge, city judge, and that's Robert Stutz, that we have done here in the city of Darlington. We also had, who has now passed, one African-American who headed up the coding department. That was Mr. Henry Chapman. He was the first African-American to do a department head in our city government. And I truly want to acknowledge our young lady who is continually making history, and that's none other than the only African-American that I've known that has held the position of clerk, treasurer for 45 years. And that's Ms. Gloria Prejean, and I did want her to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Sing it out. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ellen. All right, old business. I'm opening the public hearing for ordinance 2024-01. Zoning designation for 118 Nesspres Drive, parcel number 184-00-01-073.
This is the hearing and the second reading for ordinance 2024-01. This is the zoning designation for 118 Nesspres Drive. The planning commission returned a recommendation of R-10 low-ded city residential. And you can see on the back of item 5A, 5B, this map, you'll see the subject property in light gray with an arrow. And you can see that all the surrounding properties are R-10. And the R-10 designation is low-ded city residential, which is intended to foster, preserve, and protect areas of the community in which the principal land use is detached single-family dwellings and limited residential support facilities at low densities.
Any comments on the red line? This is the public hearing that you just introduced.
Yes, sir.
Any emails on the red line?
I did not receive any comments at all.
Comments from council?
If there are no comments, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that the public meeting be closed.
I'll second. Ms. Craven, Ms. Backus, Ms. Reed, Mr. Seager's good. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, old business, second reading, ordinance 2024-01, zoning designation for 118 Nesspres Drive. Mrs. Gardner.
So I would ask for your approval for ordinance 2024-01, designating 118 Nesspres R-10.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we grant second reading, approving the zoning of 118 Nesspres Drive, Darlington, South Carolina. Next map, 184-00-01-073, as R-10 low-ded city residential.
Second.
Ms. Backus, Ms. Reed, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Seager's good. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, new business. Friends of Main Street, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bill.
Chief Davis, can you give me a minute? Chief Davis helps me with my technological problem. I'd like to let you know that today I had a conference call, a video conference call with the folks at Green Infrastructure Center. So this grant that I applied for in October for Trees for South Carolina, Darlington was one of three towns in South Carolina awarded the grant. So we will get two to three years of support from the Green Infrastructure Center, and that will cover things like tree planting campaigns, community engagement, and additionally looking at tree scapes in disadvantaged neighborhoods where lower incomes and pollution problems and sometimes untreated lots make the communities less healthy. And so that, along with education and the canopy plan for the town, is something that we'll be able to address with this grant. So I'm really thrilled about that, that we were given that, yes, ma'am.
So how much is the grant?
There's not a dollar amount, because all the costs are absorbed by South Carolina Forest District Commission. They pay directly for everything that Green Infrastructure does for us. So as hard as I can work them, we can get as much as we can. So that's my plan.
Congratulations.
Really excited for Darlington.
And you too. You did good.
All right, while that works, I'll go ahead with item 6A. You have this in a brochure in your packet. So what I'm asking for from council tonight is permission to join Friends of the Main Street, South Carolina Main Street, at this $400 a year mark and column one. And so we would be able to spend the rest of this year up until October preparing them to apply for the second line item, second column aspiring, that would start in January. So there's some work that has to be done in order to finish the application to apply, even for Friends of Main Street. There's data that has to be collected that we're not presently collecting, that has to be submitted along with the application for the Friends. So I'm going to be doing that along with two interns from Mayo High School and then applying. So eventually, what I'm going to come back to ask you to execute is this document where you all would sign and say that you submit, approve, and endorse the submission of the application and that the facts and data in it are true and accurate. So when I get this finished, I want to come back to you to get all your signatures so that it can be submitted, but the permission of city council and the mayor has to be submitted with the application in order to join Friends of Main Street. And the little video that I have is about Main Street, and it's short, it's three minutes and something, and we're working on that. So in the meantime, the reason the Main Street program is important is that we need to focus on our local economic development by supporting our small businesses and our entrepreneurs and improving the look and quality of our downtown and their contributions to our tax base, and that will help. So the things that will have to be collected in order to submit this application are some downtown and property inventory information, some business inventory information, also some historic mapping for the historic districts, some property data tabs, the downtown traffic information, business, parking, amenities. All of these things have to be mapped out and supplied with the application in order to be accepted as just the Friends of Main Street level. So the additional assistance is that South Carolina Main Street would be supportive of, you know, our effort. And the way it would work moving forward into an aspiring position is that they will accept applications only in the fall. And so by October, you would be, we would be able to apply for an aspiring one, which would start in January. And that's where they would come to town and assist with lots of different things in order to get us up on our feet quickly. So the aspiring thing would only last two to three years, and then you'd be able to move out of that into a classic or an accredited Main Street program, and you would be having the great outlay that is required when the Main Street program is getting on its feet. Do you have any questions about Friends of Main Street?
So I'm understanding you correctly. You're advising that $400 for this first year for the Friends of Main, this is sort of preliminary to become an aspiring before you can actually receive assistance?
Yes.
Okay, because there's not, at the Friends level, there's not assistance provided, but you have to be a Friend in order to apply for the aspiring to get assistance, is that right?
Yes, but they are happy to help and assist, but the level of commitment that South Carolina Main Street gives an aspiring community is great. They're here on a regular basis. They help, they organize, they encourage, they speak. There's a lot of support that comes with the aspiring program that we won't have with Friends. But yes, the data collection for Friends and the commitment from the community is important. So the other thing that will be part of this package is a list of people in town that would be supportive of the program. So, you know, the DDRA, Kiwanis, the council, other individuals who are interested in Main Street, business owners, you know, everyone that would like to participate is what we're shooting for. So you see on the front cover of your brochure that it says this is a grassroots, community-invested program. That's what makes Main Street strong, is that you tap absolutely every citizen, business owner that you can to participate in this program, because that's what makes it strong. So the fact that it's a grassroots, a grassroots, community-based effort, and that we have broad support for the program, that's what makes it strong and successful in the long run. So a lot of Main Street is volunteer management as well, and that's important to cycle through the people that want to help, so that you're not burning anybody out, because Main Street is a lot of work, and you have to have people who are willing to help and support that. Think we're good, chief?
I tell you what, next time, don't put the computer on. Let it run. You know where you are there?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Look in there, it's tough lift.
It's still.
It's spinning, but it's been doing that, and then it'll come on, and then it'll start spinning again.
Okay.
I don't know if it's because we have multiple white eyes right now.
So is this where I say please stop streaming? Let's see if we can make it work.
Main Streets are the heart of our communities. They are nations gathering places, places of shared memory, celebration, and economic activity. They represent the core American principles of ingenuity, inclusion, and creativity. Yet over the years, Main Streets have faced many challenges, from suburbanization to the deterioration of historic buildings, to the change of face retail. While these challenges are formidable, today's Main Streets are resilient, through hard work, planning, commitment, and action by local volunteers and leaders. Main Streets across America are thriving.
Main Street stands for Rebound as American.
Downtown is important because it's our soul. If you know the Delta Downtown, you certainly know the Delta Town. Everybody knows what it's like when the public square is actually walking and driving. People are running through there, walking back and forth. We all know what it's like to be in a community like that on a Saturday. The sun is shining, you just feel great about being in a nation.
Main Street America is nationwide leader, with a proven track record of organizing older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. The Main Street America Network brings together thousands of passionate, overrated, who contribute their time, energy, and ideas to building more vibrant and sustainable communities. Entrepreneurs have been the backbone of the economy for three or four years. And I know that whether it's in the poorest rural corner of the country to the commercial district right in the heart of Chicago, there are many women and men who desire to build their own business. What Main Street does is it helps to create the environment in which those businesses are a little bit easier to get up off the ground, and those businesses are more likely to succeed. Main Streets are once again the incubators of small business and a launching pad of entrepreneurs. Bright ideas are nurtured in communities that appreciate the value of local. The Main Street America Network knows how to encourage these pioneering businesses and how to create the environment to help them prosper. This is a time-tested, comprehensive, market-based, and community-led approach, which has been applied over 200 communities over the last 40 years.
You want to see a lot of growth. You really want to see a lot of growth. Look at that truth. Being a part of a network like this, you get to share best practices across all kinds of markets. You may be in plenty of areas that are different than yours, but somewhere out there, there's a market that's very, very similar. If you can study what they've done, then you can learn about it. Successful economic development is not about what you don't have, it's about what you do have. And one of the things that Main Street has done is made people aware of what the value of downtown short buildings and how a small incremental approach to redevelopment can be the best approach. Too many communities for years thought economic development was all about the one big thing, but successful economic development is much more frequented by lots of small things working synergistically together off of a plan that makes sense. And so Main Street adds cores about creating a plan for the future.
Today, people are seeking out communities with character and places where they feel connected. Main Street America, downtowns and districts are places to raise families, start businesses, build community, and see much for the future.
We'll do that one day, huh?
Absolutely. All right. So, what I would like is for permission to start this package. And then, as soon as it's finished, to come back to you to get your signatures to submit the application to Main Street, South Carolina, so that we can have access to the tools that will help us work in the meantime and then work towards an aspiring plan and have that submitted by default. So, sometimes people are in the Friends portion for a year or two. I have experience in the Main Street program. And I think with the community support that Darlington has, that we can work quickly to become aspiring. And the reason I'm asking for you to allow this work to begin so it can be submitted is that there's a synergy working together with getting the master plan done too. So, I have a hundred people who showed up to help with the master plan. Those same hundred people can also be tapped to see if any of them would like to help with the Main Street program. So, and I'm hoping in our meeting next month, on the, that's the 19th of March, at Harman-Baldwin, at 6:00 PM. So, I'm hoping we have even more people. But while we have the community interest and input and names and phone numbers and addresses now, it's a good time to start and see if we can find people who are interested in the core areas of Main Street. So, in design, in promotions, in organization, in economic restructuring. And so, lots of professionals will have skill sets that might fit into one of those areas neatly. Citizens might have an interest in one over the other. But the Main Street program operates on grassroots input, and so there's committees for everything. So, everybody has the opportunity to participate. It's not just one board making all the decisions, it's lots of citizens working together.
Any emotions?
Absolutely.
Mayor Morgan Smith be authorized to continue with the application process for the city of Darlington to become a Friends of Main Street member.
Second.
Mr. Grant. Backus. Mr. Carter. Sigurd. Huh? Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you, sir.
All right, new business, sign bids for City Hall, Mrs. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, the first thing is the bids for the digital sign. I was tasked by our city manager to get bids for a digital sign at the front where we used to put, when the council meetings are. Instead, have a digital sign that has council meetings and public hearings and city events so that our citizens will know kind of what's going on in the city. Instead of banners out, we'll have a digital sign that will be able to provide all of the information. We did only receive two bids, one from Signs Limited, West City, for $21,026. That includes the sign, the, if you look in your package, the scope of work was for the sign and the columns that will hold the sign. That one does include it. The second one that we received from Signs Plus Sign Systems was for $21,600. However, that did not include the columns, so that would have to be done. If we guys went with that company, we would have to get out. Okay, we got a bid here. Oh. Yes, sir.
Is this going to be, where you're looking to put it in the corner or?
So, I think, so I think that if we do a double-sided sign at $21,000, it would go at the front. I don't think that would be the best place for it, given all the lights. I think that it should go in the corner, and then we could do a single sign. And we did get a bid for a single-sided sign with the two columns at $16,000. So, that would save them, save the city a little bit of money to get, to put it over there. The advantage to the double sign, because we could actually move it a little, would be that regardless of whether you're going east or you're going west, you still would be able to get the information. So, that would be advantageous in that respect. If we put it in the corner where the banners currently go, for $16,000, only the people that are going west wouldn't see it.
So, you're saying we couldn't put a double sign in the corner?
You would think? Well, if we put a double, right, so if we put a double side, can you hear me?
No.
So, if you put the double-sided sign in the corner, in order for people to see it coming this way, the, the building on that side would block it. So, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see it. So, it would be at, more at a catty corner, the same way that the banners normally are, because we have the two posts, it would be catty cornered there. Then we would only need a single-sided sign because the double side would be facing the building.
If it's turned like this, right? Kind of like this, but if we turn it, you can't turn it this way? Like straight?
So, so here's the building, and here's the street, and here's the corner. So...
And it's normally turned like this sideways.
Right, but it's normally diagonal.
Right, but you're saying you can't turn it straight?
Well, so if we do it this way, because that building is so old, and you only have a sidewalk, and it comes right to the edge, if you put it straight, you won't be able to see it until you get there.
Gotcha.
Right, so would it make more sense to put it this way? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, just from a safety standpoint. With the stop sign, I mean, the stoplights being right there on the corner, and a sign that people are trying to read what's going on, that's a quick light anyhow. I'm concerned about public safety with a sign being located there. Particularly if you put very much, or when somebody is reading into the second column to be able to keep up with traffic and pedestrians. I didn't know whether Chief had looked at any of those aspects of it. And I know that there's a uniform sign thing that Highway Department gods might, may know more about that. But there are certain guidelines that you follow with respect to putting signs up.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to be sure we, what we do is in compliance because if somebody's reading a sign that the city puts up, and they have an accident, then most everybody's going to be looking at the city.
Certainly, certainly. So, because of digital signs are so requested, I've had the ability to read a lot about it. So, if we put the sign there, we would, part of that would be the same thing that we would require for all of our citizens that put digital signs up. And they have to follow the transitions and the lights that DOT currently have in place for all of their digital signs that go up. The concern with it being as close to the light as, as it is, if, which is why I don't want it to go in front where the current sign was. I would prefer for it to go catty cornered in the corner. Because if you, I'm sure all of you have seen the sign that's on Mr. Bryant's warehouse. So, so originally, that sign, they requested for that sign to go immediately underneath the, I used to be in theater and can project. So, they, they requested that sign to go right under the light. And I told them, no, you can't, it's not safe. So, they went to me and told them they had to go to DOT for other reasons also. And DOT came back and approved that sign. And they were going to try to put it underneath the light again, and I said, "Mr., you're not putting it. You are not going to put it underneath, it's not safe for our citizens." So, I called SCDOT and had them come out and review it again. And their determination was that it could go offset the lights, and that's where the sign is now. So, I feel as though with, with the determination that SCDOT made for that billboard that's up there, that is higher up and more even with the lights, that our sign that's going to be, the columns are going to be at three feet. And if you look at the, there's a scope that showed the columns in there, it's going to be a low sign. So, it, and it's, it's only two foot by three foot. So, we can only get the information out that's needed to get out. And it's far enough away from the traffic lights that I feel as though in that location it wouldn't be a detriment to drivers that are going by.
I love the idea.
I'd like to locate it in front of Stone House. Far enough away from the traffic lights.
Sure.
The new, the...
Take the administrative sign down and put that sign up, absolutely. That could be out there.
My suggestion was going to be the same, or not the Stone House, but talk to the courthouse, maybe at 52, come into town. Boy, I love your suggestion, I've suggested about the Stone House.
Yeah.
Somewhere where we get a little more visibility.
The only reason why I would say not the courthouse is because that is core commercial, and digital signs are not allowed in core commercial. So, we would, we need, would need to, in my opinion, would look at changing the sign ordinance.
Or variance.
For, or ask for a variance because we would, we need to follow the ordinance that we have as a jurisdiction.
Would y'all mind, as a council, us asking county council or the county if they would allow us to have it where they used to have a digital sign? Because that got a lot of traffic views from different directions of town. And so, I want most people to be able to see it, would be my main interest of maybe potentially putting it at the courthouse. But I love the idea of the Stone House.
Yeah. Charles Stewart has, in the past, asked about that sign. But because it was core, it is core commercial, and they, nobody was willing, wanting to go and ask for a variance, so it might be something that he would...
So, he's approached us previously?
He has.
Okay.
He's indicated to me because of everything that they're doing with the courthouse and with the historical museum, that they would not address that issue until after all those grand openings. So, then it would take a while.
Okay.
I think the Stone, if we're on the Stone House, we'd get, I mean, as long as we've got somewhere out there we could look at.
People know that it's going to be there, and then you're...
As a city building, yeah.
Some people actually recognize that as a city building, opposed, since it's going to house some of all the offices.
Go right ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off. How much information, the sign is what size by what size?
It's two foot high by three foot long. It, it can, it can...
You can't put much information on a two by three sign. You need letters this high.
Well, it's about...
And the sign's this high, so...
Right, but it, because it's a digital sign, and it's not like the digital signs of times past where it has like red scrolling letters, it'll flip. So, you can have, you know, we can have it on a 30-second rotation and have city council meeting...
Information.
But you go right, you go right by it and then go around the block and go back to the...
It would be, it would be, well, so it would be like any other billboard that you go by and you see, and it flips every minute or whatever that time frame is.
I just, most of those I go by, I don't get the full message communicated to me before it just flips or something else. Whatever we spend money on, I just want it to be an effective way to communicate and that it really benefits the citizens trying to use it and see what we got going on.
Right, well, and we could always go with a larger sign. You can, you know, table this today, and I can go back and ask for bids for, you know, something that's larger that you believe would be more readable and provide more, larger letters.
Two by three sounds small, but you're still going to cover a lot of information.
You do, you do.
But if it's going in front of the Stone House...
We don't want it too big, which is why I kind of...
Not too big, but it could be larger than this.
Sure.
It could be larger than that.
Absolutely.
Should we just say about the price of a little bit larger one?
Sounds good.
We'll table it, and we'll come back, and we'll have both, and can make a decision if it's not too expensive, how much money we really want to spend. If the larger one is too expensive, then we already have an option for something smaller.
So, are we sitting on back to look for a double-sided sign or just one-sided sign?
I think from that direction, double, right.
Double-sided. So, we're sitting on back to look for...
Stop rotation, we need a double side.
So, it's double, larger, and administration bill?
Columns included.
Columns included.
Unless, do we think it'd be cheaper to go?
To give you a perspective, the sign that's on the courthouse is probably about two by three. But I measured that sign, and you can put a three by six over top. If that sign was taken down, you could put a three by six up there, and it wouldn't look out of proportion. So, you could possibly go to a three by six, and it would look massive.
That's what I was thinking, three by six.
And a three by six would fit on that sign.
So, is that what you, because I didn't hear the numbers, the sign?
Twenty-one, sixteen.
Three by six is what we're going to look at. Okay, good. Okay.
If he's got something in between or whatever.
Okay, that's great. I don't think there's anything between two, two and three, so...
Easier discretion on the columns if it's more expensive to have them do it all in one versus having somebody privately contract and come behind them and put columns in? Just easier discretion.
Well, I think that if we're going to do it in front of the Stone House, instead of doing brick that is in your scope of work, we could change it to white posts so it's more in keeping with the architecture of the Stone House. We use brick because the architecture of City Hall was brick, and it would make more sense and meet more people.
From a historical perspective, how in keeping as a digital sign with the Stone House?
Well, so, and there's a lot of controversy about that, right? And it, there is, there is a way, and cities all over the country find a way to marry history with technology. And so, the columns that we put there and what we put there, you know, we would research posts and columns that were used with that period and match something so that it would be in keeping with it.
All right. So, if we do the three by six with those car uses, that the signs are ordinance allowed? With the car usage?
It's general commercial, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business, abandoned car ordinance discussion?
So, I've been doing research, and Kevin Etheridge is also a contact attorney general. And section 56-50-5850 of the South Carolina statute says, "When any vehicle is left unattended on a highway or on other, on other public or private property without the consent of an owner or person in control of the property, an officer may place a color tag, and it could be considered derelict or abandoned and subject to forfeiture of the state." So, what we, we have found, both myself and the city attorney, is that we can't pull property, personal property, off of someone else's and owner's property without the owner's consent. So, so, if you go down to what is, what the Attorney General has said is that you can, if you change the ordinance under nuisance, a public nuisance, then we're talking about getting DEHEC involved because there's a, some kind of health risk or public safety issue. It's very difficult to do. Very difficult. We don't, because our ordinance doesn't even read abandoned, our ordinance just reads expired tags. And if you look at what the state has as an abandoned vehicle, means a vehicle required to be registered with the state that is left unattended on a highway for more than 48 hours or a vehicle that has remained on private property or public property for a period of more than seven days without the consent of the owner. And so, that's the, that's been the biggest thing that the Attorney General has said is that our statutes read, if the, they have consent, if the owner consents to having the vehicle on the property, it can stay on the property unless there's some kind of detriment to public safety. So, that's where we are with that. So, I'm not sure...
The car, like the car sitting on the side of the road down by the subway park down there, just sitting on the side of the road. just sitting on the side of the road, grass covered, over on top of the road, it can still sit in.
So a gra, a car, as I said in the last council meeting, a car on the side of the road is different than a car on a public property. A car on the side of the road is a car that's in a public way on pri, on public property. We can, as a jurisdiction, tag those cars in accordance with section fifty-six of the state statute and we can remove those cars. Law enforcement officers can put a tag on those cars and then they have to, to use the towing, um, procedures that they currently have to have those cars towed away. But that's where we're talking about cars on public property in a public roadway.
We brought this up before and maybe Mr. Gardner had cars. He had a car in his yard and had a car on my property that didn't have a tag. We were told that our car doesn't move.
You're absolutely correct because, and, and we have that ordinance that says you have to do that, right? And you do have to do that according to our ordinance. But the problem with our ordinance is that it's not followed up with state statute that allows us to remove the cars from the vehicle, from the property.
So we can only find them.
We can only find.
Well, we, I can, I, right, I can write a uniform summons and I can send them to court. But as Mayor Boyd said, he's talked to the judges and the judges aren't gonna prosecute that. So we're at an impasse.
So at the end of the day, we can't force them to move their car. We can't go move their car. So simply you can just ask them to do something, but you can't, well, we can't force them to do anything.
We can't force them to remove the car.
Exactly.
Okay. So as a jurisdiction though, because it is, there, there is a thing with, with abandoned vehicles. We can ask them, or we can write an ordinance to have them cover the car because our ordinance does say that it can't be in public view. We can have them, which is something that a lot of, of people whose car, the car was very important to them. They bought car covers and a tarp is not a car cover. But they bought car covers and they covered their car. Because our, like I said, the ordinance says not in public view. So we can get more strict on that part. No, you don't have to remove it, but you do have to cover it. You do have to take it out of public view so that it's not seen from the road. So it, it doesn't look derelict, so it doesn't look abandoned, so it doesn't look, but you can still keep grandmama's car or, you know, poppa's car or whatever the, you can have the time because, you know, we do, we don't know the situation of all of our citizens and they may wanna fix the car. They just don't have the money to fix the car yet. So err on the side of our citizens as much as I can. I heard somebody say that, very wise say that one time. Err on the side of our citizens, lean to the side of the citizens when we can. This is a, a place where we can lean to the side of the citizens. Cover the car. Put a little fence, put a fence slat up so we don't have to see the car. So that you can have the time to fix the car or do whatever you wanna do with the car. You don't wanna fix the car, cover the car. But we can't go on the property and pull the car. State statute doesn't allow that.
Can we look into an ordinance that would discuss or cover covering the car? Moving the car to the back? And then also a fine that the judge was comfortable with? So maybe reach out to the judge. He's also a lawyer, so maybe our city attorney as well to figure out some kind of remedy that we can work on this. But, and then just come back to us with that?
Sure.
Here's my, here's my question is, I mean, this is what I'm trying to, to solve and figure out a way to do it. Is that there are a number of houses that you look in their backyard and they've got two to three cars jumped up in it. I understand that somebody's car's messed up for a period of time, they're working on it. That's all I understand. That's where we err to that person. But if you drive by and, and see in our city hundreds of cars that are abandoned that are just jumped up in the yard, um, there should be some way that we can cure that. Uh, when I go over toward the lanes, ward over, there is a house over there that nobody's done anything to for a long time. Uh, there's stuff all over the porch, uh, it's just, uh, it, it, it would cause, that stuff like that causes people not to want to move into that neighborhood. When I turn down Woolley Street, there's a house where a truck backed in it with cans all over the top of it, you can tell the truck hasn't been moved in years. Two, two houses down is a house for sale. Who's gonna want to buy it? I mean, it's just, all that infest, infestation into the city is what I'm trying to see if we can cure. And so there should be form and fashion of whether it's a eyesore or a nuisance or something that council should look at and not just continue to lay it to the side and say that we can't do it. When I got here, twenty twenty, we, we moved cars. We went to, we went to a men's shop and we put down the cars there and they backed up and they moved.
Well, that's different, you're talking about completely different things. When you're talking about a, a gentleman who owns an auto repair shop, yeah, we do have an ordinance that says that you're only allowed to have ten. And if you have more, more than ten, then it has to be behind a fence. It has to be out of public view. So we do have a more, this is a completely different.
It's only if it's a personal property, how do we, how do we have?
Okay, so, but, because that's a commercial piece of property. That's not residential personal property. That's completely different. You're talking about apples and oranges, it's not the same thing.
Has, has any effort been made at this point in time to reach out to our legislative delegation and see about the introduction of an amendment to the state statute that would give the municipalities and counties more authority in addressing this because we are limited on what the state allows us to do. And if the state says you can't do it, we can't do it. But if the state says we can do it, then we've got an opportunity to draft an ordinance that would add some teeth to it. But legislative, it sounds like from your research, the legislative delegation may be where we need to start. And if we are having these types of problems, I would expect other communities are having these problems as well. And it may be that we would not have a lot of pushback. But it sounds like that we are somewhat limited in what we can do until we get the authority to act.
Yes, sir, I can certainly do that and get what Kevin Etheridge has been guiding in that right direction.
Here's what I want to, and y'all gotta get me clear on this, that we as the city government cannot, um, assess fines without going to court? Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to know that process because I don't see why we would have to get, what, get what, um, some kind of.
Cause our city ordinance and many of the state statutes, um, define it as a misdemeanor. Our ordinance says if you don't remove it, it's a misdemeanor. So a misdemeanor, it has to go in front of the judge. It's not something that we can find and adjudicate ourselves because we're not judges. So it has to.
We got due process.
Yes, sir.
So if we, it disavowation of our ordinance, I mean, terms like that would not allow us then to assess a fee without it being labeled misdemeanor or any kind of crime. It's not a crime, it is not following the policy.
Well, it's a civil crime. But, um, so our, what I'm, so what I'm saying is that our ordinance already reads that if you don't fix it, because there's some things where we can, we can attach a, a fine or a fee, like when properties are overgrown.
Okay, he said I was thinking in that term.
Right, except that when a property is overgrown, we go and cut the property. We go on the property and we cut the property, right? And then we, we send them the bill, we add an administrative fee to it, right? And then we have the habitual offender fee that if we have to do this again and again, then you get charged five hundred dollars. But we didn't write our ordinance to read that it's a misdemeanor. Our ordinance says it's a habitual offender fee of five hundred dollars if you don't follow our rule of overgrown and unkept lots, right? So the difference is by state statute, we can do that. Our statute, our state statutes allow municipalities to govern over overgrown properties and to cut them and to charge a fee. Our state statutes allow that. Our state statute does not allow us to go onto private property and pull the car.
Got you, but not, not go on there.
Right.
Because what I'm getting at, that it is, it, it is, if we have a policy and is it not following that we have a policy that says, like we do with the, with the, um,
We have a.
The, the machine shops, you know, like we, we have a policy that governs them.
Right.
So why not have a policy that determines how it needs to look? Because I thought, okay, let me, this, let me take where I'm going. There's a, a gentleman that keeps his property wherever he goes, like, um, what was the, what was the comedian that had the junkyard?
Samford.
Samford and Sons. And he has, he just goes around and he collects all the stuff and it's, and it was a bother to the neighborhood. I understood that the city, because there were so many complaints that he had to clean that up or, or, or something. He, there was a R to it and there was consequences.
Right.
That is what I'm saying, so the cars could not fall into whatever that is?
So when Samford and Sons, you know, they had, um, a couple of properties that Mrs. Bakers and I have coined that term for. She would call and say, what you doing about Samford and Sons?
Okay.
Right. But see, now you're getting into something that's different. Cause now we're talking about public safety, fire safety, egress problems when you have an abundance of junk.
Okay.
That's different than a car.
Than cars over there, okay.
Is there a limit on the number of cars a, a person can have in their yard? Is that what it covers that or?
So the state statute says numerous. Just numerous, so whatever we call them, is that two, five, ten? I guess that would be up to interpretation. But I can definitely go back and research more, reach out to legis, this legislative branch of South Carolina, get with Kevin Etheridge and see.
Your judge.
My judge. Let me write that.
Can you tell me what's the difference between?
It gives us a couple options.
What gives you the authority to go on a property and tear their house down? And not be able to remove their car? You have, you have the authority to do that.
State statute, ICC codes, um, allow me to do that. When a property is condemned, um, it's a public, because it's a public, because we're going into public safety, right?
But I'm saying abandoned cars are public safety also. I mean, there's, there are people that are living in these cars.
That's a person's yard.
Rats, children.
That's a person's yard.
Not anybody yelling, it's no public safety.
State statute allows me to clean down houses and tear them down. State statute doesn't allow me to go on personal property and get a car.
Well, that was, you're gonna come back with something.
I'll come back with that.
Yeah.
I think you, I, I think you thought of just having them put a cover over it or put a mini fence in front of it, suffice and move on. I mean, calling this legislative, they think they're gonna just change the rule overnight. It's not gonna work, gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen overnight.
And you're gonna take more than Darlington calling and complaining about that for a little.
They would have, we'd have to get them to sponsor legislation and they'd have to get people.
Exactly, that gonna take time.
And it would be probably this time next year before we actually get.
If they, if they agree to that.
If they agree to it.
But you're gonna take more than one little city calling complaining about some call and then somebody yelled.
Which is why we're gonna go ahead and do the research.
Exactly.
To develop something that is amiable to council, that is, um, thinking of the citizen, um, and the betterment of the city of Darlington. And until such time as if the legislative branch wants to do that, we'll have something in place that will help us.
Now that was part of, you know, I just attended the legislative day of action and that training. And this is why it's important for all of us, council, mayor, our city manager to attend training like that because you have an opportunity to talk to your legislators and to introduce things and to inquire about those things. It also gives us an opportunity to learn about these issues. And we pay a handsome fee to be a part of the municipal association. And one of their primary goals is to train us. And I think there would be a little less confusion if we all took the training and participated in that and actually got our certificates in that training. So then we could all be on one accord and it would sort of ease some of our, our chaos. I, I want to challenge the rest of my council members and my mayor to let's complete this training so that we can all work for the betterment of our community and advance our community because it is imperative that we do things in a proper manner and follow the guidelines and the rules that have been laid out before us. And it's difficult to do that if you don't know them. And that training provides you with that and will definitely help us move our city forward. And, um, again, I think bring a peace and a calm to this, to this governing body.
Graduate to graduates that program, I guess you probably have, yeah.
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 It's very, very helpful, I agree, those classes are wonderful.
Yeah.
They really are.
Yeah, really.
You know, I'm, I'm a beginner, so I've started my beginner courses. But for those who've been on the governing body for more than four years by now, who should have at least graduated from the basic, if not from the advanced. But let's start with the, the basic and I'm gonna challenge you that we can finish together this year. We will graduate next year on legislative day. That is my hope.
And I do suggest the first one y'all take is public hearings.
Oh, yes, yeah, they did have some very, um, important.
Business.
No.
Okay.
All right. Where we at now?
All right.
Jaylen Jones.
First reading ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh two. And, uh, chapter fourteen, article one, fourteen dash four. And poultry, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, so the building department was tasked with researching the municipal ordinances of surrounding jurisdictions as they relate to chickens, turkeys and ducks. Both the cities of Florence and Hartsville allow the above mentioned farm animals within their city limits. Each of the related ordinances provide requirements to ensure their presence not only protects the adjacent owner's ability to enjoy their property, but also ensures the animals are properly cared for and will not become a detriment to the public. Um, that's part one, that's B. So, um, there has been, this ordinance has been called into question because someone has chickens. Um, and the ordinance read, um, farm animals and poultry prohibited. And that has been what has, um, been enforced for many years, several years at least. And so in reading it, there was some ambig, um, ambiguity with it. And so we wanted to go ahead and amend it, um, so that there is not any to further define that you'll find in E, um, what a nuisance is, instead of just saying a nuisance and not having it defined as a jurisdiction will also have public nuisance as it relates to animals in this chapter. Um, will be defined so that there are no questions. So we are, um, asking to amend, um, this ordinance to allow chickens, turkeys and ducks with, um, eight, um, eight requirements. Being that, um, you're not allowed to have roosters, you can only have hens. You have to have a fully enclosed chicken coop. That chicken coop has to be enclosed by a fence so that predators can't get into it and the chickens cannot get out of it. You will be responsible for making sure, um, that the, um, fecal matter of the chicken is properly disposed of. You will have to make sure that the feed is in a container to prevent rodents or any vermin from getting into it. Um, you will not be allowed to, um, let your chickens, turkeys and. chickens, turkeys, and ducks to free range into other people's property unless you have, they have permission to do so. You can't slaughter them, um, and they can never become a public nuisance.
All right. Okay, right now, right now, the ordinance does allow for the, the, for chickens and ducks.
So, the ordinance says farm animals and poultry are prohibited.
And the tur, how, say it again?
The ordinance reads farm animals and poultry.
Yes.
Are prohibited. And that is what has been enforced at least for eight years.
Okay, wait.
These things can be had unless they are a nuisance.
Well, there's a line in there that says turkeys, chickens, turkeys, and ducks in numbers that are a nuisance are prohibited.
Yeah, but.
Since there was that, they're not allowed, but these are allowed. Chicken is poultry, we decided as a jurisdiction, because, um, in the past, people have, they've been violated for them. They had to get rid of them. Um, and then this most recent time, there was a violation. And in, and in the violation, I was made aware of many people that have chickens. I've also been made aware of, um, businesses that sell chickens when they're, it's the season to sell chickens. I didn't realize that there was such a season, but I'm, so.
Okay, wait.
But so, if we, if we enforce the no chicken rule, then, um. Those businesses would not be able to sell them, um, and people would not be able to have their chickens. And so, we don't want people to not be able to have their, their chickens, but we do want people to adhere to certain rules. Um, and the complaint came in because chickens were free-ranging. They weren't contained, so we wanna make sure that your chickens stay contained, that you have a proper place for them, they're properly cared for, you're not allowing for the chicken expressions to.
All right, I get, oh, oh, I'm trying, I get straight, because we got a lot of time. If, cause if, if the president says what you just said, then I don't see the need to amend it. Cause you says it prohibits, but the one I read said it did have that language, but it, it, it said you could keep certain things, uh, because I know a lot of folks, they have their little pet chickens and the, what we used to call biddies and the, and the little, the little ducks and things, you know? Different folk like that kind of stuff, like I like my dog, they like that, they like those for the kids. So I thought, that's all we were talking about. What I'm seeing this is, it stops all of that, you're admitting it?
No, 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 we're not stopping people from having chickens, this explicitly.
This is a big list to me, we gotta get, run it straight here.
Right, so.
For me to understand what the word is, it sounds like this.
Language of the previous, of the current ordinance, our current ordinance, its language had some ambiguity. It was enforced for many years, one way. It was interpreted by other people another way. So, the idea, and what we're trying to do is take the ambiguity out. Explicitly say chickens, turkeys, and ducks are allowed if you do one through eight. If you have a coop, if you have a fence, if you clean up after them, if you don't let them free-range, if you, if you don't slaughter them. So, we're not, we're not saying you can't have them, we're saying you can have them, but you're gonna, these are the rules that we're gonna follow in order to have them, so that you're not gonna, you're not gonna, um, prohibit your neighbor from enjoying their house, so they don't have to go outside and hear, hear chickens, smell chickens, see flies because they're not properly being maintained.
So, so what you're saying is, you've gotten complaints from citizens about the chickens. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, I was told that there were, there was complaints about chickens.
Okay, but my question again is, you code enforcement, did you get a complaint, complaint? Did you get complaints about chickens?
No, ma'am.
Cause I can't figure out how in the world we wasting our time with something as foolish as this. Now, this is totally ridiculous to us.
I see where if we don't do it though, I see where it could cause a problem in the future.
I understand that, I understand what she's saying, and I agree with Shayla. The code enforcement person, I, I, I agree with that. And I understand why you're making this adjustment, and I agree we need to make adjustments to settle this nonsense. But the fact that your time is being wasted and our time is being wasted, to talk about some chickens.
Ducks and turkeys.
And ducks and turkeys is ridiculous.
Is there a number that you, are you limiting them to a number?
No, we aren't limiting them to a number unless it becomes a public nuisance and that goes into the next line.
So we just need to go ahead and approve this and move on to the next thing, because this don't even make no sense.
Question, just for assuming we pass this and we've got these ordinances in place. And, um, somebody says, my neighbor is violating this ordinance. Do they come to you as court and code enforcements and you fill out some paperwork that they sign? Do they go to police department, who's, who's to have in? And then you would issue a citation and they would go before Judge Stuck?
Yes, sir.
Do you need a provision in here that says that if they are found to be in violation, they have to do A, B, or C?
The, um, that chapter already has, um.
So we don't have to deal with that afterwards?
I know, it doesn't like.
Get to the next one.
I, I just wanna make. I wanna kind of, and I don't even wanna, uh, be, um, stretch this out anymore. But along with what Councilwoman Bakers is asking you, we wanna know that you received these complaints. Because I'm here, I have had other conversations, but I never thought that we were gonna have to deal with it here. And that was something personal issue that occurred for some, for, with, with, you know, that some kind of a personal issue that occurred, but I didn't think that it was gonna get here. So when I'm looking at this and seeing these changes that need to be made, I wanna know that you received enough complaints for us to have to deal with this.
I have, I was made aware of complaints that were received to the administrative department of the city of Darlington. I was asked to see if there were indeed chickens. That in the past, we have enforced no chickens in the city limits.
Let me rephrase the question for you. Did you speak personally to somebody that complained to you about some chickens? So you answered no question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so it was hearsay that came to you about the chickens?
I can't consider that hearsay.
Did you speak to the person yourself?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then it's hearsay.
And you got your directions from one of us. For, I mean, who?
I got my.
I received the complaint. I went to my employee and asked her to do her job and to follow the ordinance. I received the complaint.
This, so if we had to be vague, just say it.
If you haven't heard the answer, because you already got calls evidently, so I just told her, she said, why don't we just?
That's what I said, I never thought that it would.
Somebody in the trap. I would like a motion.
No, don't just make a statement like that. What I'm saying, I said it, I said, I didn't think that that was something that we would be dealing with here on council.
Well, the problem is, is in the ordinance, one of them says no chickens, and in the very last line essentially says you can't have chickens.
I got that, I got that.
They say the opposite thing.
That's what it said to me.
I would like to make a motion to pass the first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh-two. amend chapter fourteen, article one, fourteen dash four, farm animals, poultry.
Can you have guineas? Guineas, can you have guineas?
I wish you could have guineas. Is guineas considered a chicken?
This is read.
Is not considered a chicken?
Say it for her.
Nope.
I, Mrs. Carrier.
Then that's how we should do it.
First reading ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh-three.
Let us know. How this come.
Chapter fourteen, article one, fourteen dash eight, public nuisance.
Already indicating on Stuck, then.
So, um, in lieu of the chickens and a nuisance, um, a nuisance is not defined in our ordinance of what a public nuisance is. So. So that everyone understands what a public nuisance is. Our citizens, council, me and the chair that I'm sitting in now, anybody who sits in the chair after me. So everyone will know what a public nuisance is. Um, what was previously fourteen dash eight reserved is now gonna be fourteen dash eight public nuisance. And it will clearly define what a public nuisance is. Allowing or permitting an animal to damage the property of anyone other than its owner. Maintaining an animal that is diseased or dangerous to the public health. Maintaining an animal that habitually or repeatedly chases, snaps at, or attacks pedestrians, bicycles, or vehicles. Or any animal whose behavior constitutes a dangerous animal as outlined in section fourteen dash thirty-seven. Any animal that runs at large upon public or private property without permission from the property owner. And any animal that defecates on public property, public or private property other than the property of the owner unless the owner immediately removes and properly disposes of the waste. That will be what our public nuisance ordinance, our public nuisance definition will be.
Amen. Um, Tuesday.
It's, that's just examples, that's not the exhaustive, because it says, and not of limitation. So should something else come up that clearly creates a nuisance, but is not set out in A through E? They can still be cited for violation.
Yes, sir. So people who have dogs, for instance, and they're walking their dogs and allow their dog to defecate in your yard that now is a public nuisance, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're adding, we're talking about for the Renaissance, adding more parks and green spaces, that they will be responsible for picking up behind their animal when they're out in public. As it should be, I have two dogs, and both of our leashes have the poo bags on it and we clean up after our dogs. Nobody should be responsible for cleaning up after your dog except for you.
So how is it gonna apply to citizens who by chance, the dog get out the yard, get away and running down the street? They don't even know the dog is out the yard.
Well, I think where it says here.
How is this gonna apply to that?
Where it, it says habitually and repeatedly, um, and we, you know, we can add that different. You know, I, I think that we do have to have, again, what I said earlier, we have to lean to the side of the citizen when we can. So if there's an accident, the gate was left o, open on accident and the dog gets out. And we get the dog back, the dog goes back in, and we never have a problem again, that's not a public nuisance, that's an accident, different.
Is there a fine that's gonna be attached to this, or?
So that, that is in the rest of the chapter that has violations, and I can provide that to you.
You have me, I need it to.
Absolutely.
I can email it to her.
I can email that to you tomorrow.
That's her, because I let my dog out early, and he likes to go over to my neighbor's house. He meets the kids at bus, I'm in trouble. I'm just one of those, uh, pet owners that.
But right, but it says here, so it says here, any animal that runs at large upon public or private property without permission from the property owner, so if your neighbors are accustomed to your dog going into their yard and it doesn't bother them and they don't think it's a public nuisance and they're not repeatedly and habitually snapping and trying to eat them, then it doesn't constitute a public nuisance because you have permission from that property owner to allow your, that your dog to go on their property.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Yes, sir.
First reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh-three, amend chapter fourteen, article one, section fourteen dash eight. I think this is not an amendment, this is the creation because it was.
Yes, sir.
It's a creation.
Create, uh, accept that, um. Defining public nuisance.
I'll, I'll second.
Mrs. McCray, just read, anyways, Bakers, just read.
Reluctant.
Mrs. Carrier.
Leash on my dog, oh my gosh.
New business, Ed?
Tied up.
Uh, council works on a discussion. Would you like to, uh, work on some dates? Have workshops between now and December?
Yes, please.
What works best, you wanna keep on Tuesday nights, Thursday night, and then people like you Bible study on Wednesdays? Or you're different, no one's gonna Friday night. Mondays are probably just coming off a weekend. Tuesdays or Thursdays, what works best?
Do you wanna do one or two a month for the next couple of months while we're going through budget season?
So, we are looking at what now?
Either Tuesday or Thursday, at least once a month, but.
I mean, Thursday's is. Gardeners asking for two of them for the next few months until we get to budget, if I'm understanding you correctly.
First question, when is the budget gonna start?
Unless you wanna break it down with just one a month for a while, you might give it up.
Are the workshops, do you want to include the budget or?
Yes, whatever we need to discuss, if there are issues that are brought. For, um, during our regular council meeting, any issue that's brought up from citizens' comments, we may get to address. How some things being handled or, you know, and even working towards, uh, and figuring out these things and. Taking our perspective, so we have an opportunity to talk among one another about issues that may arise. Um, like right now, there's, I have citizens who've been calling me with some complaints, but there's no place for me really to discuss that. So in these workshops and work sessions, hopefully that's our opportunity to talk about the things that are, the concerns that I've seen since I've brought to us.
Yeah, my, my, my question is, is do you want to have one just for budget, or do you wanna have it all together?
Say all together, yeah.
When is our budget sessions gonna start?
Thank you.
Starting March, right? Fifth of March. So, March the fifth would be our normal city council meeting.
Well, can we have one in February, I mean, is anyone opposed to having one, you know, February, let's go ahead and get it started?
Not at all, let's do it.
Then let's go for the twenty-second, which is the Thursday, the twenty-second?
Can we move it to the next week?
The twenty-ninth?
Oh, gosh.
Twenty-ninth don't work for you, does the twenty-seventh work for you?
A Tuesday's better or a Thursday's better?
I don't care. Probably Tuesday's for me.
Tuesday's working better for me.
Do the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-second would, twenty-seventh, you would be fine with me.
And then from the months going forward, y'all just wanna do the week following? Or do y'all wanna do council meeting, two-week break, workshop? And then we can just always keep it a constant?
Every two weeks, yeah, yeah.
But we can, you're talking about having a council meeting on the first Tuesday of the month and having workshop third Tuesday of the month.
That's what I would like, just to keep, so we can all understand.
The only one we would have to sort of, well, we go. We may still need to, um. Make some adjustments, we can set that as a general thing, and then for special things like budget workshops, um, we may want to set them at a, at a special time rather than that, than at a general, if we've got things that need to be done in that fashion. I understand, but I don't mind going the first and the third as a normal situation. The company can start with the twenty-seventh of February and then the nineteenth of March. April would be the sixteenth, correct?
The nineteenth of March is our master plan, uh, Harmon balcony.
A little louder, I didn't hear you, babe.
That's a good workshop.
Um, the master plan public meeting is six P M. on the nineteenth of March.
Okay. I kinda like to think of our work sessions as prior to, um, council. Just like we're gonna do one at the end of February, that, that would affect us, what?
That gets us geared up for March.
That would affect the agenda for March.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, so at the end of March, yeah.
The week four.
So you want to put down from February the twenty seventh, March the nineteenth?
Well, March the nineteenth is gonna be our debut of our master plan, so we can just count that for our work session for March, or do you want to change the date?
Well, we might want to have another one, because we're starting budgets, we're talking budgets.
So, do we want to do the twelfth, or the twenty sixth? Keep close to my birthday now.
March the twelfth. Y'all want to do the twelfth?
Twenty sixth, maybe that's after the meeting, so if something came up in the council meeting.
Whatever y'all come up.
I think it needs to be at the council meeting. Something come up with council meeting discussion.
February twenty seventh, March the, twenty sixth, twenty sixth? April sixteen?
Yes, sir.
What?
Sixteen.
When in March?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
April the twenty, April the sixteenth was set on.
April sixteen.
Uh, May seventh, the city council, will be May twenty first?
So was it April what?
May twenty first?
April sixteen.
April sixteen. June the eighteenth?
Mr. Penny, can you send these out to us?
Is that good for now, or?
What was the date in May?
May is twenty first.
She's always gonna be the third weekend in the month, right?
Okay.
The third Tuesday.
Okay.
Except for March.
So we look in it, so that means we'll be meeting first and third, first and third Tuesday.
That gives us, that sets us for five, five months, and then we can look at it at that point.
Um, what time was, what time?
Six o'clock.
He said six, okay.
And, uh, y'all, send that out, everybody. Thank you. All right. Resolution for mutual aid agreement for, uh, the task force, multi-jurisdiction task force. Chief, thanks.
Good evening, council. This is only gonna take about forty-five minutes.
Hey, you want to explain, explain what it is first, and then I'll read the ordinance?
Yes. Um, multi-jurisdiction task force mutual aid agreement to combat criminal narcotics throughout Darlington County. Um, in a nutshell, y'all, in this city of Darlington, city of Harpswell, equipment, um, if we work together and make that big bust, we split it accordingly. If we work together and it takes twenty man-hours to do something, we, each one's paying for their own. And we, we've had this before, it works. The sheriff's office being the biggest jurisdiction, usually runs the task force, but at any time, we can withdraw our person or persons, or we can step out of the agreement. Basically, the county and the city of Harpswell is asking for permission, well, along with us, to fill in, in fact, drugs.
I'll, I'll read the resolution. A resolution approving the Darlington Police Department to enter into a mutual aid agreement for a multi-jurisdictional task force. Whereas the mutual aid agreement between the Darlington Police Department, Harpswell Police Department, and Darlington County Sheriff's Office continues a multi-jurisdictional task force to combat criminal narcotics throughout Darlington County. And whereas this joint undertaking provides for mutual assistance in criminal narcotics investigations by the Darlington County Combined Drug Unit, and whereas this agreement establishes the procedures and responsibilities of all agencies for the reimbursement of certain overtime and other pre-approved expenses incurred in joint law enforcement operations, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council, the city of Darlington assembled this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty four, that the mutual aid agreement with the Darlington Police Department, Harpswell Police Department, and Darlington County Sheriff's Office is approved, and the city manager is hereby authorized to execute all required documents.
I'll motion to approve the resolution for a mutual aid agreement for a multi-jurisdictional task force.
Second.
Mr. Mayor? Inspector? Ms. Reed? Seager? I, ready?
Thank you.
Thank you. But, um, splash pad, pump house fit, Mr. Andrew?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
So, good evening, council mayor. Um, come to you tonight for three bids for our pump house for the splash pad. Um, you'll see three P D building systems. Um, common luxury homes LLC and Scott's Construction. Uh, the two on top are metal buildings. Um, you, you can read through what, what, everything was the same size. The last one was by Mr. Scott, which is a block building. I didn't know if we wanted to go back with what was already there, to match what was inside the park, or if you wanted to just go with a metal structure. Um, metal structure, the cheapest one's nineteen five sixty-eight. Of course, the, the block building, um, is a little bit more expensive, it's twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Ladies, which one would be prettier, block or metal?
Looking aesthetically, of course, the block is gonna look pretty popular, but, I mean, that's going behind the, sort of behind the Scott House.
Yeah.
Which is also.
All, all that's gonna be in this building, to, to let y'all know, all that's gonna be in there is the pumps and the, the little, um, intricate electrical system stuff that runs the splash pad. So it's gotta be inside something, so people don't mess with it, and the weather just kept out the weather. So if it's a bigger, like you used to have a pump house outside your house, that's what this is, it's a pump house outside the splash pad.
I guess the only thing about that would be, is that, that's considered historic, and is there an ordinance anything about not having a metal building or anything in that particular area?
I think with that splash pad, I think that's, took away the historical.
Is it gonna be climate control heated?
It's gonna be insulated, and we can be able to go in and put something in at a later time, if we need to. But with it being insulated, um, I think we'll be fine as far as freezing.
I have the ear of y'all, I don't have the man, because I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, my help.
It's constructed, it says it right here, in, um, the back.
Do these things have electrical, so you.
They're gonna have electrical, we've already set that up with, um.
As I said.
Exactly, yeah.
What do you think it'll have, the block of it, now?
I just want some fuel. You tell me what you want, we'll have it.
It's my elf brother here, so it's naturally, yeah.
I would, I would, I would bread of the block building, I think that aesthetically would be a little more pleasing. You can beautify that a little easier. That's what I would see. But, that's six thousand more dollars, fifty-five hundred.
And we need to be practical, and you say the middle will do the very same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thirty-one hundred dollars, so it says the industrial.
If you did, if you do the industrial with the gutters, you add thirty-one hundred dollars.
You see, so it's gonna take it, of course.
If, if you were to do that, you, I mean, you really wouldn't need to do that, in that sense.
Mr. Scott have, he's got one docal door, is that?
That's the, yes, sir. It's a big fraction of one central door.
But is it, is it electrical?
None of it includes electrical, or unless, does it say that?
It's not some electrical.
And he'll have the, he'll put outlets in there.
So, with, um, and the reason, I mean, with this metal thing, uh, and to upgrade.
To upgrade the industrial, you'd have to add three thousand one hundred dollars.
Right.
Because you're taking up to what the other one was.
So, okay, so what, I'm taking that to mean that we got the.
You got the.
The cheapest stuff.
Yes.
The cheapest kind of material at the chip front, and I just don't think we need to do that. And I'm not about filling nothing with the cheapest material or none of that, really, I'm not.
I got you.
So, with that in mind, my suggestion is that we go with Scott's Construction.
Is that a motion, ma'am?
I like to make a motion.
Well, to, it, it, to me, it doesn't matter, but to match the building, you need to go block, if you wanted to match what was already there. Um, if you wanted to save money, the, the other one's just as good as, as that. Um, like I said, I just, I just want building.
So what are we gonna do with the old building?
The old building's gonna remain there. So it'll, there'll be, the old building, come off of that building, um, twenty-five feet, that's where the tank and everything is, will be between those two buildings. That old building, once tennis is done, once the high school tennis team leaves there, um, will be turned, there's bathrooms in it now, we'll make it bathrooms. Um, the plumbing is always in there to do that, so, um, that's, that's what we're looking at doing with that building. And making this one the pump house, so you'll come off, and it'll be a sixteen by twenty right here.
Lee, did any of the contractors tell you when they, when they were started, is there a delay?
I have not been told there is a delay. Um, I know with the metal buildings, they're like four to six weeks out, but.
This.
Um, and, and Mr. Scott didn't say, but I'm sure he's probably got something going on that'll put us down the line a little bit, but not open up in that.
I'll tell it in the night, we can start.
Do you know how wide is those doors, if you want to be, we need an eight-foot wide opening?
We just want to be able to get in there and take out the, the, if we had to get in there at work and bring something in, it didn't have to be eight feet wide, it could be double doors, we can get in and out of. Um, everything's gonna be built, it's gonna be stowed and placed in there, we just want to be able to get the pipes in there without.
Would they be as big as those two doors?
Oh, yeah.
Again, I like to make a motion.
They'd be solid doors, it'd be easy.
Yes, yes. They'd be solid.
I like to make a motion that we accept Scott's Construction, if, whether they're a block building. Our second motion?
Twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. McCrayber? Mr. Seager? I, Professor Scarry?
I have a question. Don't you?
Okay. Thank y'all.
I have a question for the, for the, I received this in the mail. And I'm sure y'all got the same thing in the mail, about property that we will not pick up anymore. Um, ranges, heaters, freezers, certain things that the council said we would not, that this letter said we would not pick up off the street anymore. I went back and did my research on May the twenty-four, twenty twenty-two budget, we raised the citizens' fee six dollars. Four dollars was for street sanitation, the extra two dollars was in order for this, for this street and sanitation department to pick up these items off the street. When the council changed and said we're not gonna pick it up? When did this happen?
I think that was an apartment head person that said that they were gonna do that, I don't think the council ever bettered and said that we could do that.
Yes, we did, go back and look at the video, when we did our budget, it was a part of our budget. And we raised the fee six dollars to pick this up, we, we charged them an extra two dollars to pick these things up. Now you want to go back and renege on what we told the citizens we were raising their fees to do? Now you want to turn around and say, oh, I changed my mind, we don't want to, we don't want to pick it up no more, but we gonna keep charging you two dollars.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, we need to look into that.
We did not, we voted on, and if you go back and look at that count, the budget meeting, five twenty-four twenty-two, it was a part of the meeting.
We'll pull it up and see what's written on it.
And, and who, and who authorized this to be sent out before it coming back to the council?
That's right. That's right.
It didn't come to council. This is not Curtis Board show.
Curtis Board.
This is a council show, it's everybody to have a right, all council members, you use my name all the time. You've been using my name since you've been on council.
All right, I would like to.
Say, we'll pull it up, see what's done.
Let me explain this to y'all too. It's in the councils. Whoever changed our Darlington page disengaged prior council meetings. So you got to know how to go find it, because it's hidden away. Now you got a new city page that does not include your prior council meetings. All council meetings supposed to be on our city page. Those prior years is not on the city page. Because it's hidden away in an old city page. Which was, those meetings was not moved properly to the new city page.
So the record shows nobody hid the page, or other page somehow was lost during the transition of employee, and we lost access to that.
No, you, I found it, I looked it up, because nobody did.
We lost access to be able to do anything on that page, so that's why they built a new page.
Okay, so how I pulled it up? So how I pulled it up?
You're miss, you're not listening to me. I said that the old employee had access, and we as a city do not have access to that Facebook page anymore. Does that make sense?
The minutes should have been moved to the new page. I always got excuses.
That people are trying to hide.
I always got excuses.
I would like a motion to go into, well, to end this council meeting, to go into executive session.
Second. Mr. Mayor? Mrs. McCrayber? Ms. Banks? Seager? I, Professor Scarry?